Here.
Ambrois?
Here.
Bailey?
Here.
Burrell?
Here.
Brennan?
No, no.
Bright? Casper?
Here.
Serf?
Here.
Chase?
Here.
Crockett Hubbard? Dean Shinbruck?
Here.
Evan?
Here.
Rittman?
Here.
Fritchie?
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
Goffier?
Here.
Gibbs?
Here.
Gubsterson?
Here.
Hayne Line?
Here.
Henscom?
Here.
Kayden?
Here.
Massett?
Here.
Mick Elroy?
Here.
Merritt?
Here.
Norman?
Here.
She's muted. Wave your hand. There she is. Perry?
Here.
Powers K?
Here.
Powers S?
Here.
Pacino? Representative Scott, thank you. Simorero?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
B.C. Williams? Somebody needs to mute? Wells?
Here.
And Rusk? It's 31. You're welcome.
The first amendment on our agenda is approval of the August 9, 2023 meeting minutes. There are no corrections. No corrections. Seeing none, they will stand at the conference. Thank you. We are on public petitions. This is the portion of the RTM agenda where the RTM welcomes comments from the public. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or as directed and if possible submitted written comments. Presentation should be limited to matters pertinent to the town of Groton. The moderator or members through the moderator shall ask questions only in order to clarify the speaker's presentation. Responses may be given by the moderator and/or the town manager. Individuals should state their name and address for the record, please. First person I have on the list is Ms. Margie Gookins.
Margie Gookins, 26, Daniel Brown Drive, Mystic. The First Amendment provides that Congress make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting its free exercise. It protects freedom of speech, the press, assembly, and the right to petition the government for a redress of grievances. The First Amendment prohibits retaliation by government for exercising protected expression. Generally speaking, the First Amendment prohibits government officials from retaliating against persons for exercising their First Amendment freedoms. Freedom of speech, which has been defined to include all types of verbal and nonverbal communication, is unique in its ability to elicit a strong, immediately, and adverse reaction from the very government that has sworn to uphold these liberties. When a government official retaliates against you because of your freedom of expression, that person is breaking the law and violating your rights. Unlawful retaliation occurs when a person or an institution takes an adverse action against an individual either in response to the exercises of protected activity or to deter or prevent protected activity in the future. You, the elected officials of Groton, are my government officials. I came to the town council and the RTM and expressed my thoughts about the poor behavior of some elected government officials. I also filed a state of Connecticut complaint that my government-elected official was violating the open meeting section of FOIA, which is also protected as my right to express my grievance about my government. I was then retaliated against by Groton representative Genevieve Serf. I individually have the constitutional right to address the town as well as the state regarding the behavior of my elected officials. All RTM members, as well as Representative Serf, swore to uphold the U.S. Constitution, state of Connecticut's constitution, as well as Groton Town Charter. She has violated this oath and the law. After my comments and FOIA complaint, Representative Serf has repeatedly disparaged me in public in newspaper comments, town emails, town meetings, and on social media. This is retaliation. Therefore, please be advised that I am making a formal complaint right now to the town of Groton, specifically to the town manager regarding Representative Serf. The retaliation that she has brought upon me and my protected rights under the Constitution. I know this is the financial body of the town, and you would rightfully be concerned that this investigation will costate taxpayers and legal fees. That also concerns me. Though I would be more concerned with why elected officials, your fellow elected representative is retaliating against a private citizen in your community and violating the U.S. Constitution. I request the RTM holder accountable, speak out against her attacks on a private citizen, and hold a hearing. Do not ignore this complaint. Your Groton constituents have the right to freedom of speech to their government without retaliation. Stand up for the United States Constitution and this Groton citizen. The steps the town and the RTM take will then determine what my next steps will be. I am giving you, my elected officials, the chance to make this right.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? So we see at communications, does anyone have any?
No, no. Approval of minutes.
We already did it.
What's? Down there, sorry. Yikes. Okay.
Um, we're seeing a communication. Anyone?
I have a clarifying question. So how do we go about having a hearing on this complaint? Because we have been elected by the people and we're here for the people, and they should not be afraid to come and talk to us about any subject and worry about retaliation. So what can we do about this?
I will have to look into that because I don't have an answer for that tonight. But I will definitely look into that and have an answer by the next week.
Thank you.
If you want some more.
Well, I know some of it. So elected officials, this is a town clerk, elected officials cannot be removed from office except by a legislative act, and that's pretty difficult. You'd have to, I think there's no history, recent history, but it would be a federal law. You know, you'd have to be put under jail, jail sentence or something, not just accused. But, you know, there's certainly ethical, we have an ethics commission that certainly could hear something like this if there was a violation.
I'll have an answer too, bud. Thank you. Any other communications from Representative Serf or Tom?
Maybe you can put it closer to you. Is it, is it on?
Did you turn the speaker on?
I'm not going on at all?
Yeah, the moderator's microphone is not on.
You're not coming through.
Yep.
Maybe it's not plugged in. It happens. She can use mine. Here. I don't ever need to talk.
There we go. Okay, is that better? Oh, yes. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Representative Thomas?
So I received an email from a concerned constituent regarding some legal documents that were filed by the town or representatives of the town in response to the Gottspace lawsuit that is ongoing. Or I read the documents, but I was just hoping to hear maybe some explanation from the manager on what exactly those documents are about. It was a response, it was a request to extend time to file a response to the Gottspace lawsuit. Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, that's exactly, one document was, and just, no, it's not our attorneys. The, our insurance company, anytime there's money involved, they assign an attorney, so it's their attorneys that don't report to me. The insurance company's attorneys are getting up speed. It is a matter of practice, just asking for time because there's documents to read. And then the other one, which was just saying, "We are assigned to this case," so that's all it is.
Just a quick follow-up to that. The way the papers are written, it's listing all of the town councillors and seems to be responding on their behalf. Have the town councillors been made aware of what's going on and kept abreast of the developments?
Today was the first time I saw that document. They're not going through me on what they filed than I did here. They were going to do an extension. I just think it's a matter of practice. They just have to file, because they, they're covered under town insurance, including the carrier. So it's just a matter of practice.
So how is it that the insurance company's attorneys are handling this and not the town attorney?
Anytime you have any money mentioned in a lawsuit, the, pretty much, we run it by the insurance company. Hey, do you want to assign someone? They typically do. So you just don't usually see stuff involving insurance-type things here, but we have a lot of other things that go on, so.
All right, so, and the insurance company attorneys do not report to you?
No.
So who do they report to that?
The insurance company. I've reached out to them twice, asking for an update or to come to the council. They haven't responded yet. I've reached out to the insurance company. I think they just are getting up to speed first because there's a lot of documents to read, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Representative Fritchie, you had your hand up. Anyone else? Representative Wells?
This would have been at the July meeting, but it was canceled, and then the August meeting. By then, I'd forgotten about it. But I happened to be at Par Four, and I went into the clubhouse on the golf course, had a couple of questions about how certain things operated. And one of the members there found out I was on the RTM, and he was, "Thank you, thank you, thank you for rebuilding the, for approving the capital improvement to rebuild one of the bunkers." And I sort of passed it on because he effusively kept saying, "This, they tend to notice the things that we do, and they don't notice the things that are undone, haven't been done yet." So everybody was quite pleased and probably didn't expect we'd ever approve it.
Thank you. Representative Massett? You're muted. Representative Massett?
Okay. Just to back up to the citizen's petition. Would it be possible for the Rules and Procedures Committee to meet?
I will, Representative Massett, we're not on that right now, and I do apologize if you had your hand up during that time. But I will make a decision by next meeting. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, I have a few things. I did hear from Representative Bright that he was not going to be able to make it tonight, and Representative Watson. We have a referral from the town council for the cannabis tax revenue dispersment resolution. That will go to the Finance Committee. And then I have an email from a constituent that I didn't print out, so I'm going to read it straight. Ms. Rusk, my name is David Hume. I live at 157 Deerfield Ridge Drive, Mystic. I wanted to express my dissatisfaction with behavior and decorum at the last RTM meeting over the Groton Property Reuse Committee report situation. I would commend your patience and your respect offered to all members of the RTM as moderator during the rather rude goings of discussions of the Groton Property Reuse Committee issue. I will CC my local representative Mike Whitney and the town council also. I personally do not favor this issue being involved with the RTM. I am in favor of this issue going back to the town council where those members need to discuss this issue as reasonable, respectful, and dignified adults. No more yelling, interrupting, hand waving. I must also add that the proponents of the Groton Property Reuse Committee were most overbearing, that do not have a place in government, especially since you and your members being volunteers. I'm also concerned that this Property Reuse Committee members have taken on undignified and disrespectful campaign methods at RTM and town council that places the work of the committee chaired by David McBride in a less than positive light. It is hard to attend meetings, and if you would like my further input, you could call me at, give us phone number. Again, I want, wanted to express my appreciation for your work as moderator, which at times presents challenges and encourage you to remain as dedicated, respectful, and a patient person that you are, David Hume. All right. Moving on. We have Superintendent Austin here tonight, so I'm going to move her up since the town manager will be here all night.
Thank you, town manager. I appreciate it. It's been a long day today. I think I have a slideshow for them to put up.
Do you have a slideshow?
Joyce sent it to you?
She sent it to me today.
Yeah.
I have been at work all day today. I am very sorry.
I also gave you a handout with my top 10 challenges and successes, Letterman-style, so. And that was over there in the corner of the room.
Getting Better Together?
Yep.
That is your slideshow. John, can I send this to you and ask you to? While we're doing that, if you haven't been able to grab the handout, now would be a great time. Perfect. Thank you.
I just wanted to say while we're getting that ready, we did have a challenge at the end of the day during bus dismissal at Mystic River with a very young child who got dysregulated. And the teacher was amazing, and the staff, the crisis committee came right to his attention and secured the situation. And I have to say, you know, I love this community. Partnering with my police chief and with the police department, whether they're SROs in our high school and middle school, or whether they're DARE officers, or, you know, Officer McClellan and the dog, Chase, you know, coming to the schools. It's just really great work, and our principals were right on top of it. We had to call some community support people, but the family and the child are getting help, and that's what's really ultimately important. So it went out on Facebook and social media, and like all things, it's usually never accurate. And so the police chief and I crafted a press release, and it actually went on the evening news. It was very respectful. And I sent a letter out, the principal had already sent a letter to his community, but I just wanted it out there. I like to be as transparent as possible. But know that children are under my care, and it's one of the most important things. As a teacher, as a principal, and as a superintendent, it is the most important thing I do. I was a principal in Monroe during Sandy Hook, 10 minutes from that school, and my teachers had children in that building. And some of my fathers were the first police officers at that school, and so was Chief Fasaro. So we have that connection, and things like this happen in our country. But we have to take care of our very young children so it doesn't happen. So just let you know that great care was taken in that situation, and everybody was just fine. And, you know, but it takes a whole community, so I appreciate this community because I know that we're all working together. And so for, if you really start with the first slide, because that was ultimately, it was my assistant superintendent, Dr. Piazza, who slash is high school principal, I sent him over there, and he's doing a great job over there while doing his other job, and I'm helping him. But he came up with the, coined the phrase, "Getting Better Together." The state for attendance coined the phrase, "Showing Up Together." So we're all going to show up together, hopefully, and be well again someday. And also, you know, we do this best when we collaborate and we do it together, so we need to support one another. So I always do a reflection, and I share it with the board, and I do a reflection, you know, on the progress on my goals. But there were 10 things that I'm not taking credit for. It really happened because of this coming together. It happened because of the Board of Ed. It happened because of my staff and faculty. But the first one was this continued growth in student achievement. And we were recognized by the State Department of Education for two schools of distinction, Northeast Academy and Charles Barnham. In the past, since I've been here in 2014, we received two blue ribbons as well in the military schools, Charles Barnham and Thames River. Really, the Mary Morrison slash Thames River, they're students and teachers from Mary Morrison. So we couldn't be more proud, and we continue this work. It's not perfect. COVID hit, and there've been a lot of issues with that, but we continue to persevere. We also have tried to improve communication. I hope RTM is enjoying getting their weekly updates. They're a little wordy. Sometimes I have to remind my board members, there's so much in there sometimes. So they get board notes, and then I send out to the community the weekly update. And I just think it's important to have everybody really informed. The board had started a communication committee, and they've drafted a communication plan. There's also staff on board who help support communication initiative. We have a new website. We have a new parent square, which is, it almost has a Facebook look, but it goes out to all the families. So they get messages from the classroom teacher, they get messages from the school, they get messages from me. And, you know, it's just a good vehicle, and they can get it any way they want it. So if they prefer a text, they can get a text. They prefer an email, they can get an email. And if they want to hear my voice one more time, they can hear from me. So we're just trying, and we're going to do some focus groups. Dr. Phil and I went around to all the schools a few times, like three times, and just sat in the faculty room with some cookies and juice and listened to teachers and faculty and staff and kids. You know, my teenagers say it all. So they really do give us good information. We just need to be good listeners. Budget development is always a challenge, but I always keep in mind excellence, efficiency, and equity. And we continue pursuit of implementing additional state grants. I actually presented to the board like a three-page document that included all the state grants. I'm going over every RPESR that they have. We just got two mental health grants for, our youngest learners needed a social worker for, you know, pre-K, K, TK, and kindergarten. And so we do have those supports in the school, and we're trying to be very proactive. It's important. So just know, I go after every grant, so. Anything that can help us. And then DODIA World Language Grant had one of the most fantastic first years. And this is like number six, and I'm waiting for number seven. And they're million dollars or more. So we have a world language team that came together with a consultant, and they've revamped a lot of the levels in high school and middle school. Because we're an IB middle-years program, world language is really important, you know, as global citizens. So we still have French and Spanish. Latin was kind of done on a per needs basis. But we also, this year, have a new French teacher and a new Spanish teacher through the grant, starting in elementary. So our third and fourth, our fourth and fifth graders will have a carousel model, which is what we typically did at the middle school so that by the time they get to middle school, they can choose a language. And our hope is that they take four years of a language, and they can get that seal of biliteracy. The seal of biliteracy for children can give them nine credits at Southern Connecticut University. And it's, they really become bilingual. So if we start young, and we have many students who are multilingual learners, who are very proficient in another language. So we actually have a course called Spanish for the Spanish Speaker. And we test them for that seal because sometimes they're very close to it. And then they can take another language, so they might be trilingual. So it's all for the kids. That's what I say. We continue to focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion, the vision and mission. We've included setting up, we have a whole district 100 group committee that has supported this initiative. And now we have school equity teams. We've, I tell my board, they did revolutionary policy. When we looked, when I heard students say in my more-than-words that I do with Dr. G and in the Black Student Union, "How come more kids like me aren't taking these classes, A, P, I, B?" And so, you know, we really did the analysis, and so we talked to councillors, we talked to families, we encouraged kids, and we provided support. So whether it's through CTL or Falcon Academy or other ways, you know, kids are supported in that hard work. And they've been very successful. We actually almost doubled the numbers in those courses. And they definitely mirror the community better. Are we there yet? No, but we will be. We also have focused on the shifting of the balance with the science of reading. It's really made headlines. So you might have seen a lot of that. Now, in Groton, we've always believed in foundational skills for young children. Phonemic awareness and phonics has always been important, but I have to say that people were doing different things. So we've really systematized it. We've used a program called University of Florida, or U-Fly, for phonics. We've actually written a model curriculum. I've told the state they need to look at it because they haven't done that yet. And, you know, we're just very excited. We have a literacy consultant who's working with all the teachers, and they've done some powerful work. And there were about 70 teachers who came and did these different book talks, and that was one of them. So we also were invited in the third cohort with the State Department and CAPS to be part of this master class, which is wonderful professional learning. There were 10 of us. We rocked it. We had two tables. I said, "Is there a limit?" And so it's And so it's principals, it's literacy coaches, it's me and Dr. Phil. And we are actually taking like this graduate level course on foundational learning. Margie Gillis, who is really someone who comes from literacy how, well renowned. She was phenomenal, she was our keynote the other day when we took our first course. So just know even, even old folks like me, who've been doing this for 43 years, still loves to go back to school and learn more. So, um, continued support on health and wellbeing. We even had goals, we allowed teachers to have goals for social emotional learning for their kids. We told them also to take care of themselves. This has not been an easy three, four years, I have to tell you. So those social emotional learning goals are prioritized. We've revived the mentor program. So this is a plug for all of you if you want to get in and see some of those beautiful new schools and work with a child and read to a child or play a game. We have a mentor program and it's very well publicized if you go to our website. This past year was the 25th anniversary of the mentor program. How many of you know about the mentor program or have ever done the mentoring? And, you know, it, with COVID, we really didn't let the public in, you know? We were kind of hibernating in those schools and wearing masks and keeping our distance. So it's time to come back to community. And so we really could use that support. It's such a valuable experience. And I'm actually carving out part of my day to mentor a child too. It'll probably be the best part of my day. The summer of 2023, I talked about so many teachers were involved in professional learning, postgraduate work, curriculum development, summer camps, summer learning, summer school tutoring. We had many tutors across the district, math and literacy for kids in the elementary and middle school. And we had the Apex Credit Recovery and Enrichment Program at the high school that lots of kids participated in. So if you fail a grade, you really get extra attention in the summertime. And, you know, well-qualified teachers and you get the support and then you can feel successful again. And we actually invited eighth graders as well to come. Okay, now we're getting better together.
All right.
So just to give you a few things I've been dealing with this summer. I had one week on the Jersey Shore, that's all I was allowed. But I have nine grandkids on the weekend, I'm plenty busy and happy. So we have a search going on for new principal at Fitch High School. The principal was there for four years and he actually found a place closer to home and a little smaller and he seems very happy. We had Kay come in, they did focus groups and they did, um, they did a survey. And Dr. Mary Broderick, I don't know if any of you know her, but she actually did this process for me. And I thought it was such a good process that I asked her back again. And she actually created a profile of the principal and I'll publish it on the website so you can see that and maybe put it in. I might, I don't know if I put it in my, my weekly notes, but I'll make sure I get it there. And I left, when I left, the whole committee, interview committee was working with five different people today. They'll have, they'll do it again tomorrow. And then they're going to invite back people for the second round and then there's going to be a third round. But I'm hoping by the end of September, we'll know who the principal is so we can announce it. I also is down a finance director. Not an easy thing to lose, not to have a principal and a finance director. Lori Lapine actually came to my support and has helped with that department. And we've met every day just to make sure we've got our accounting straight. And David Flag, Fliege, who is a Chief Financial Officer for Hartford Public Schools, is our new business officer. So we're really pleased with that. We've also had 30 new faculty meet, members join us district-wide through either retirement or people who've moved on. We've had ongoing curriculum development, as I said, world language expansion. The new courses are the NNDCC, which is the precursor to junior ROTC. And Terry Henkel is the teacher and he's worked all summer long to get the qualifications to be an instructor of JROTC, getting the uniforms for the kids. And we have some really excited young people at Fitch High School who will be marching hopefully soon and learning about military science and leadership. We also have a course called Ed Rising, which is really to grow our own, to get kids who are at Fitch to want to come back to teach. And so that program really will encourage more students to become educators. It's really hard sometimes to, to get your staff to mirror your community. And we've worked really overtime. And one of the things that we found is growing our own, whether tapping a para on the shoulder or tapping someone on the shoulder or having kids come back to us for, to be teachers is one of the really good ways to do it. We also are faced with a new educator evaluation and growth plan coming up. And then of course, the shifting of the balance for K3 reading is so important. Building thinking classrooms in mathematics. And that's right up my alley because I was a middle school math teacher and a math coordinator. So math is my baby. But I also like all the other things. And then diversity, equity, and inclusion, district and school committees are things that are really right in front of us now. So I am a Navy junior. I don't know how many of you knew that I'm a submariner's daughter, so I'm back home after being in Fairfield County most of my career. And we, at my home, we called it all hands on deck and that's what this summer has felt like. Really, we've all had to chip in and do things when we've been down a man or two or a woman or two. So, um, and one of the other things they say in the Navy is one ship, one crew. Every member on that boat has important work to do for our national safety and security. It's all about teamwork and everyone on the Groton team is critical to the mission of teaching and learning. Teachers, administrators, directors, admin assistants, para educators, tutors, KAs, food services, custodians, maintenance, and even you, our community representatives. You are so important to helping support our schools and our students. And we're kind of all in this together and really looking for a healthier year. And then, you know, I just wanted to finish up that we are looking forward to a really good year this year. And, um, we know that we can do it if we do it together and if we communicate better. So, you know, we'll have to show up together and get better together. And, you know, they always say it takes a village. Well, I think it takes the whole community to do this together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Austin, or Superintendent Austin.
Susan.
I always.
I'm Susan.
Does anybody have any questions for the superintendent? Representative Gustafson.
Thank you. What grade level in elementary school are you introduced in the world language?
So it's in fourth and fifth, but they're going to do some enrichment for the other children. They have some flex time, so they'll be able to do, teach them some songs and do some other things. The idea is to hopefully in the future be able to expand on this so that you could have an elementary program. But it was really important for us to get that carousel model started so that when they go to middle school, they can really dig into and dive into one of the languages. And that will really start their road to success for high school and, and hopefully getting that seal of biliteracy.
Representative Gothea.
So you had mentioned that that world language teacher, the two, the French and the Spanish, they're being paid for by a grant currently?
Yes.
What's the lifespan of that grant?
Five years.
Five years.
Yeah. It's the Department of Defense Education Activity, which we've received quite a few. That started our literacy initiative, our math initiative, STEM, careers, world language, so.
So would the plan be to then turn that into a budgeted position? Okay. And then my second question was about the social emotional language goals for both the students and the teachers. Could you speak to kind of what some of those goals are and how they're being measured?
Well, one of my favorite goals was a group of teachers from Charles Barnum who wanted to take a graduate level course on mindfulness and calming techniques and balance and, and strength. We don't call it yoga. You know, it's really kind of more exercise and mindfulness. And, um, so they actually took the course themselves, practiced it with their kids, like in morning meeting. Then they actually trained the teachers and the teachers are still doing it after school. And then they brought families together and circled up and showed them calming techniques. So it was one of those goals that lasted a couple of years and they collaborated on it. And that's one of the ones that I, really to me was a, a highlight because they took their own time and energy to learn something new and then to share it with students and share it with families and share it with their colleagues.
Any other questions? Representative Serf? Representative Norming? Oh, nevermind.
Actually, I do have a question. I'm very impressed with the World Languages program. And I would just very like to say something quickly, anecdotally, that my 97-year-old history teacher from Williams, whom I'm helping with her memoir, pointed out that in her day, not only did the naval officers not know foreign languages when they were posted abroad, but the wives certainly weren't expected to speak, speak the language. And it was a shock to the admiral when he sent both of her and her husband to Italy because they, they had met in Italian class at university and they both knew Italian. And she said it was, made the whole posting there so much better for them and for the people who they were working with. So I think it's a really, really important thing and I'm, and I'm, I'm so pleased to hear that you're doing it, especially since we have so many naval, uh, children of naval officers here. And, and since they do go all over the world.
Right.
It's just be incredibly valuable for them. Now, do they, is there a follow-up when they get to middle school? Can they keep taking the languages?
Oh, absolutely. They've actually re, um, kind of reviewed these and really made them more engaging, the curriculum. And, you know, they can take all the way through level four and then they can take international baccalaureate languages and AP languages. So they can really go as far as they want to go.
Yeah, I think that's just really marvelous. I would love the ROTC program being revived. I'm a pacifist by nature, but I've grown to really love the Navy from being in Groton. And I realize it's, it's really the heart of Groton is all this Navy, all this Navy population that we have here. And the kids are proud of what their parents have done and it's so great that they can continue in their footsteps. So, um, I really congratulate you for getting all those programs working.
Thank you. It's a work in progress.
Representative Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, just a quick question. As far as, uh, supports for students in the higher level classes, uh, how's that looking with like tutors? How's, how's your range in higher?
So we, we do have tutors and teachers who can help support students. We have multiple programs. Our CTL was extended, so really finding time for students to meet with their actual teacher is important. And whether the student reaches out to the teacher or the teacher reaches out to the student, having time during the day. We also have, um, programs that are able to support them with tutors. So there could be whole class periods where that can happen as well and after school. But most of our kids are so busy, after school doesn't always work for them.
Understood, yeah. So, yeah, definitely, I want to echo Representative Serf's comments regarding the junior ROTC situation. Very glad to see that operational and look forward to see that grow and become deeper rooted in our community.
It's something that not only I wanted, but members of the community. Portia was a teacher at Westside and the Westside students actually created a survey to send out. And we found out 30% of our students wanted this program. But as things go in the military, something, sometimes it takes time. So we had called Millington, we called Pensacola, we called all the places. And finally, we got the word and I think having some letters written from Congressman Courtney and from the Navy base and the captain was very helpful. So we did get on the docket for it, so.
Excellent. Thank you very much and I appreciate all the work you do.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Councilor Bordelain.
Thank you. I too wanted to just thank you for the, the kids at school call it the Junior ROTC program, even though it's not official, but it's in the name and our JRTC.
It's all over their uniform, too.
And they had their first after-school activity today where they were learning drills and marching. Um, and to my understanding from my son, there's about 50 students in that program. And, you know, this was an initiative that I was very passionate about as a son who's serving on the USS Virginia currently and wanting to have some military opportunity as a career pathway.
Right.
Along with Mrs. Lambert, uh, back at Westside back in the day. So I just want to thank you for that, even though it's not the full program. It definitely is a teaser program, which is a bridge program to get us ready.
Right.
But with that, as it was stated by Representative Thomas, the concern still, and it's across our region. A friend of mine today at work was stating that Ledgerd was short physics teachers. And they're not expecting anybody until later in the year. The concern for the higher level push for, um, one of the big things coming with the merge of the two middle schools. And as a person who is privy and part of Westside myself as a student with the three middle schools and the fact that Westside at one point was not offering the higher math programs equivalent to its sister schools in the community, was to broaden that and make sure that everyone had equal accessibility to higher education as far as the accelerated math and science programs. And with that, it was stated that there would be more support helping and there was a push to make sure that more minorities and students of color and especially, especially because that was showing a trend of a lower number, that there'd be more support and more infusion. And what I'm finding, what I'm seeing with my own son who's in the upper levels, if you're not staying after school for the academy program with the students, they don't have the tutors. And sometimes during the time when the teachers are free because of contractual agreements, it doesn't work with the students' schedule if they're in band or other programs. So I'm just curious as to when we are going to meet the needs of the higher level students and, you know, support that acceleration of higher level programming the way that it was intended to be supported.
Well, I know that, um, I had said that you weren't in the room, but Dr. Phil Piazza, who's my Assistant Superintendent, is over at the high school. And the whole team, Carmita Hodge and Matt Brown and Adam Diskin are working really closely. And I know they're doing it case by case, trying to ensure that those children have something that's going to work out for them at the time that they need it. So whether it's a block of period of time where there is someone who understands the, whatever they're doing or it's a time period like CTL where your son could actually meet with his, his teacher, his math teacher, they're, they're working out all those details.
And lastly, lastly, the task program that was brought on.
Yep.
As an initiative that actually Ian Thomas, um, when he was student teaching out in Old Line, brought back the philosophy and then you guys implemented it under Dr. Gannier and yourself.
Yep.
And it would help 504 as well as IEP students, as well as general ed students or military students that need to be caught up.
Or kids in advanced classes.
Correct.
Because it's a lot of hard work.
But what's not happening though is some of the classes, what I'm finding, are being taught by, say, a music teacher and they're not getting the math or the physics instruction in that, that block. What's the plan? Because the goal of the task class to get the credit was to have the teachers that are in those fields teaching those classes and in a structural environment like, you know, actual, you know, educational room.
And I think there is some of that, but I don't know if it's enough. One of the things I've just applied for is a high dose tutoring, um, grant, ARPESR, that would provide us funds so that I could really fully staff the middle school and high school. It's really only for secondary. And so we're waiting to hear on that. I should hear any moment. And as soon as I do, we are going to get some highly qualified additional tutors. And that lasts, I think, two to three years.
All right. And lastly, I'll close with, um, one of the things that we were seen as an alliance district was lack of access to arts enrichment programs in the arts field, looking to broaden that horizon. And yet Fitch High School has cut, uh, music programs. Several classes were cut this coming year. And I didn't know if you could speak to it because some constituents have spoke out about that, like percussion and different programs. And people are very devastated by that in the music department because it is a very complex group of kids that are very dedicated to the music program. As well as, you know, things like fencing and sporting events where, um, they're the most inclusive because there's no tryout for it, yet they're not getting the same funded as the higher level, um, things that are more exposure like football. And so I'm hoping that everything will be funded equally in the hopes that those music programs that were cut, uh, classes, music enrichment things, um, would come back. Thank you.
Thank you. I can check on that.
Thank you.
I have someone there I know.
Thank you.
A few people.
Is there anyone else who has any questions? Anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Representative Thomas.
Uh, thank you, Madam Moderator. A quick follow-up on that. Actually, it was brought to my attention that something has changed with the busing contract. Is it, uh, what's the situation with, um, the buses operating in district to shuttle kids around during the to shuttle kids around during the day?
So we had to go for a new budget. And a lot of people, even in this room, know that it was multimillion-dollar increase to our budget. And it didn't provide the six-to-six. A lot of those bus companies had, you know, they have contracts themselves. And remember, a couple of years ago, we had a hard time getting bus drivers. So they had signed off on a contract that we then have to pay for. They're not, even though bus drivers aren't my employees, they, you know, employees of STA. And they do a remarkable job getting our kids back and forth safely. They really care about them, the bus drivers that I know. And the, you know, we negotiated a contract. We had maybe two people come to the table. We tried to put it out again. And we continued with STA, because they were the best bid. But there were increases like everywhere else, between fuel, and we have all felt it, electricity and buses. But we are working on it. I actually met with the head of STA today, and he's going to get me some field trips in between. So he's going to work with me.
So any group would have to pay for the use of a bus during the day?
Except for I've got a certain amount of field trips per school that won't be costing me.
And that's just per school or per department within the school?
Per school. That's the way he's doing it, yeah.
And I know.
Unless I can find a busing grant.
I'll get on that.
There must be a transportation grant out there.
Driving around the region, you know, different towns do things different ways. And I've noticed, like, you know, some towns have their own Board of Education actually running their buses, where it says, you know, blank whatever town, Board of Education on the side of the bus. And I'm wondering, have we done a cost-benefit analysis on, you know, is there any possible savings if there's?
Most of those communities are very small. So to operationalize something like that would be millions and millions. We'd have to go out to bond to create something like that, to purchase the buses, to train the drivers. That's a whole nother league of work. And to take something like that on would be a significant cost to a large district like ours. But we really did our due diligence on negotiations with this contract. And, you know, that's the best we could do. And they worked out something to make it a little more digestible in the beginning. But it was not an easy task. It's a good thing I'm a math major.
Understood. Oh, and one last thing. As far as now, it's been a couple of years of the merged busing, as far as like the middle school and the high school together. Do you have any data coming back on that as far as like overall efficiency and?
Yeah, there would be no way with having intra-district magnets at the elementary that we could do a three-tier system. There's just not enough time. But the other thing is, when we did surveys of families and students, about 85% said it was very safe for the middle school and high school. As a matter of fact, the high school kids are like, act like bus patrol sometimes to the middle school kids. As soon as they get off at Fitch, that's when some of the middle school kids start acting up. So it actually, you know, is a good thing that they kind of monitor. And the big kids sit in the back, just like in the old days, and the younger kids sit up front, so. But the kids are saying, 85% of them said that it was a safe ride. So I listen to the kids. And if it's not, I hear about it.
Great case of positive peer pressure, I guess. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Representative Frickman?
Thanks, Madam Moderator. I thank you, Superintendent Austin. I just had a quick question. In regard to the busing, are kids losing out on field trip opportunities as a result of the limited amount of money that the schools are getting for the busing at this point? So are, like, traditional field trips, like the sixth grade would go on, fifth grade, whatever, are they canceling those because we don't have the funds for busing now?
So when I created my budget last year at this time, we were not knowing that this contract would be signed this way and that these costs would go up significantly. So when we actually created our site budgets and our operations budget, we had not taken that into consideration. So you're right, there are limited dollars. But I think the principals are really working hard to find out which of the programs they want to really continue to do and which programs will come to us. So like the Nautilus STEM leader will come to us. Project O does a great job, and they'll come and do the field trip in the school. And it's really less travel for the kids, so there's more learning that happens. So a lot of these partners of ours, Mystic Arts and, you know, Seaport and Aquarium, they will sometimes come to us so that we can get more grade levels to have an experience. So we're trying to make lemonade out of lemons. But you're right, it's a challenge. And I've got to figure out what I'm going to do for next year.
I appreciate that. And I get them coming, and I understand that. I just hope, maybe moving forward, we can maintain that those kids have an opportunity to be immersed in the real stuff, to actually go to the Seaport, go to the Aquarium, go to the Nautilus. Because it's one thing, people coming, and I get that. But it's another thing, seeing it firsthand.
I couldn't agree with you more. I, you know, take them out to a habitat and experience it. Or a ghost walk is much better than trying to do it in the school. So I couldn't agree with you more.
Representative Goethe?
Something that Representative Thomas brought up just tickled my brain about the busing. So the decision to go to all magnet elementary schools, I'm sure you don't have it offhand, but if you do have the analysis of what that added in terms of cost to have multiple buses running to different schools, just knowing anecdotally, as my son started one of these magnet elementary schools, some issues with the bus startup, that's common. But I know we sit outside, and I can see four other stops for four other schools. And it just, it seemed, you know, a little bit odd to me that this one bus couldn't. But of course, it's because the schools are spread around. So do we have an idea? Or at some point, was there an analysis done what the added cost to transportation would be for making all of our elementary schools magnet as opposed to having students go to their home?
I could probably figure that out. But it is part of the Groton 2020 Plan. And I lived that with Dr. Grenier, as you remember. And it really was, the state had identified that we were out of compliance with racially imbalance at Claude Chester. So we were able to build three brand-new schools. The middle school, so we have one middle school and one high school on this IB campus. We were able to reduce the number of elementary schools. We had at one point, I think there were 10, and now there are five. And we actually surveyed our parents. And our parents were saying, "We want to have neighborhood schools, but we also want to have choice." We were losing a lot of kids across the bridge to New London and Larn. And that was costing me $2.5 million, or costing us $2.5 million. So the idea was, let's balance our schools. And really, we looked at it socio-economically balancing it. And it really did the job. Most of our schools are like 51%, 50%, or close to that, within 10% margin. Northeast still has a little bit more to go, but they're much better than they were. And the new, brand-new schools are perfectly balanced. So that was really the number-one thing that we needed to do. It was right for our students, right for our families. And it did give choice. So not all families go across the town. But there are some who do, and they appreciate that. And we're trying to stabilize that. So if families get into one of our schools, even if they move across the town, they don't have to move to the other school if they don't want to. They can stay. Because the more a child's able to be stable, you know, in a school, and the less transitions they have to make, the better, I think, it is for them. Says the child who was in eight schools in 12 years. Somehow, we survive.
Representative Frickman, did you have another question? Representative Frickman, did you have another question?
Oh, no, sorry. I forgot to put my hand down, sorry.
That's okay, thank you. Representative Serf?
Yes, I'm just going to throw in one more word of praise. Thanks to Councilor Bordaloon and Representative Thomas. I went to one of the concerts that your kids were giving. And I was so astonished at how good they were and how sophisticated the music was, that it was, it was, it really took my breath away. And then I thought, well, you know, they could be doing a lot more with this. For instance, there are all these seniors in assisted living, you know, who love music. We could bust them over to those concerts, and they would love it. And maybe we could get more money. Since you have a public, sort of public-private partnering with Aquarium and Mystic Art, maybe we could do the same thing and raise funds for the music students, because they are excellent. And it breaks my heart to think that you were going to cut any one of them. In fact, it was a completely percussion piece that they played at the concert where I was. And it was fantastic. And so I heard everybody here, you know, these are not just kids concerts. They're really excellent. I mean, they really sound like professionals. The music director is fantastic. The music itself is really interesting.
It's a lot to be proud of. And the kids are very dedicated.
I'm saying, appealing to everybody in town here. Try, and if you could advertise them a little bit better. But everybody should really go to these concerts. It's so inspiring.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other, thank you so much.
Don't forget about mentoring. Look on the website. I'll send it out, too, in my notes.
Okay. I'm going to apologize ahead of time. My asthma's acting up. So if I'm a little breathy or yawning, please excuse me. Town manager, your report.
Sure. I've actually, I have a lot of allergies going. It's a day. I don't really have much to report. Let me do the financials, financials first. Preliminary fund balance as of June 30, 2023, unaudited, is approximately $32 million, which is 22.4% of the FYE 23 general fund adopted budget. Final numbers will be available once all year-end entries have been posted and we go through the audit. General contingency budget was appropriated at $300,000. We have not made any requests against that yet. And capital reserve fund balance as of June 30, 23, unaudited, is $1.02 million. And I don't really have a report. I can certainly answer questions. I've been very tied up with the Noink contamination. Last week, a lot of my spare time's involved in that.
All right. Any questions? Representative Goethe?
Yes, I'd like to ask about the Noink contamination. I know you and I had spoken, I think, last week about potentially engaging with a contractor with some cameras. Is there any more news about that? Were they able to identify the contamination?
Not to date yet. I was hoping today, but I'm still waiting a couple of the results from today. But we did have a camera. Now, typically, just so everyone knows, we usually have our own camera. It just happened to be broken at this particular moment. Unfortunately, it's out for repairs, so we had to bring a contractor in. They ran, not only did we do dye tests over by Abbott's, by Noink Shipyard, going through, doing dye tests up the forest main uphill, doing the camera work, nothing. All our main pipes look great, no leaks detected, nothing detected. We've, let's see. Dye tested, today we were dye testing the, first, let me finish up. Deep went out and we were looking at the most likely spots. There's only one spot really on septic out there currently in the Morgan Point area. Deep went there to check that, no issues. We today went and checked a line at a house that's under, that's having some construction work. Thought, well, maybe it got broken, nothing there today. We were also supposed to check a line in between that house and another house. I haven't heard the results of that yet. Let's see. We did reopen the docked beach. There does not seem to be an issue there. Luckily, it is more contained around the Morgan Point area at this point. Today, public works went out and dye tested the grinder pump and grease trap at Noink Shipyard. I have not received the results yet. Deep met with one of, with one of our public works at the Noink Shipyard. They dye tested the pump-out system. Now, Deep had, had, back on June 20, had inspected every pump-out system in the area. And they all came back fine. They did this one just because it was most centralized to this area. But they may, I'm thinking, we have a meeting in the morning. They might end up expanding and redoing inspections further out. So we'll see. Let's see, we were preparing a base. Greg Hanover has been getting with it. We've got different people doing water samples. So Greg Hanover's been working with our GIS to put it all on one map so we can kind of track, you know, where different readings were and all that. So that's just about done. And I've been reaching, I've been keeping neighbors updated. But I've asked, and we're thinking, assuming these last couple items from today come back with nothing, my expectation is we will start doing the rest of the houses out in Morgan Point, going out towards, further south. Those are the houses that at one point, a lot of them had been on septic at one point. You know, could there have been past issue with a septic in the past? Could there be a bathroom still hooked up to a septic system? But I've asked them if they have any history on it. Now, Ledge Light's looking up all the, they're looking up all the paperwork on the past septics, too. We can access the grinder pump and laterals. And we did put laterals in not long ago. But we're going to go through, dye test the grinder pump laterals, but also asking permission to get into the house to do it from restrooms out. Some people have already responded and said, yes, they're happy to have us there. So I imagine the next couple of days will, unless something shifts tomorrow, the next couple of days will be going house to house.
So as I'm understanding this, the first incident was reported around August 20, and we're continuing to get high E. coli counts?
You know, it's not always consistently high either, though there's some back and forth to it. And then, you know, some people, and we've run down other, you know, ideas people have. You know, could it be a pump-out boat? Could it be a boat that hasn't been pumped out? That kind of thing. You know, some people threw out Mouse Island. It's not thought to have anything to do with it. But so, we're kind of wait through. not thought to have anything to do with it, but, so, we're kind of way through.
It's been determined that it's a human waste issue and maybe not a local animal population?
Well, we think maybe that little, the bad test over on the beach was probably an animal one, because the actual water, that was in a catch basin, and the, multiple times the water out by the beach was crystal clear. We think it's a sewer, just the patterns, but I've, I'm not 100% that it's, we're pretty sure it's a sewer, but it's not 100%.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Representative Tom, or Representative, sorry, Council Boardland. I'll get it right, yeah. My apologies.
Thank you. So I received, I've been keeping track of the lawsuit with, you know, Figarello, and at the time at the council, it was stated that it was nothing to worry about, it was a frivolous lawsuit. But unfortunately, a lot of us counselors are named on there. And as of yesterday, when I did my final search again, it came back that, in fact, the, an attorney's group that's not ours had moved forward to get an extension. My concern is, as a counselor, our names are on there, and if, even if it was considered frivolous or not, the fact that somebody representing supposedly us, but no one's reached out to any counselors, or at least not to me, stated that they were motioning for an extension. But when you search this, having all of us on there, with a large lump sum of money that we're supposedly being sued for, and the last update that I had asked for, once I had asked, can we do something with this? And it was stated that we would, we would push it to the insurance, but up until this point, we've had no meeting to discuss with anybody, no insurance company, not our town's attorneys, and now there's an extension. And from my understanding, typically legally, if they're going to file for an extension, you should notify the people that's names are on the lawsuit. I'm very concerned that there's no communication, because if any counselor's name is searched...
Madam Moderator.
Is searched.
Representative Massett, yes.
I rise to a point of order.
What's your point?
If I'm not mistaken, the town manager had discussed this already.
You are correct.
And I did send an email out, just a little while.
Sure. And this is my first time.
Okay, so the point is taken, that this has already been discussed. Maybe this is a better conversation to have at a council meeting, because it was already discussed here.
Well, this is the first time as an ex officio member under the rights, under the manager's communication.
That's not true.
And it's a new development.
You could have been here earlier, you could have been here earlier to discuss it with them.
That's fine, if you don't want to, but it'd be great to have some updates as a counselor with the names on it.
Okay.
There's been no forthcoming information, the public should be...
Is that something that can be discussed?
And the RTM should be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just, you know, I'm, I wasn't notified of everything, they're separate, so.
Yeah, that's a concern.
I've reached out to them multiple times, they haven't responded.
Okay. And then my next question is, you know, was also just aligning with Goethe, Representative Goethe, about the concern, have had a lot of emails reaching out about that contamination, so I'm hoping that there'll be some more information forthcoming. Thank you.
It's my number one priority.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? Okay, moving on, the economic development, you guys all should have received the July and August reports.
Just a note, it's been a while, I'll ask John or Paige if I'm giving updates soon.
Yeah. Somebody is not muted, I'm not sure.
It's probably me, sorry.
Thank you. All right, moving on to committee reports, Rules and Procedures Committee Chairman Watson could not make it tonight. Representative Massett has the minutes.
Okay, the minutes of the RTM Rules and Procedures Committee was held at the Annex Building, September 6th, 2023. The meeting was called to order at 1800 hours by Chairperson Watson. Roll call. Committee members present, Watson, Thomas, Massett, Bright, and Pacino on Zoom. Also present, Representative Aubrey on Zoom, and Katrina Fitzgerald on Zoom. And the town manager was also present. Under a new business, Chair Watson read referral 2023657 aloud. Representative Massett was recognized by Chair Watson, who summarized what FOI Director of Education and Communications, Mr. Russell Blair, had sent to the town manager. Representative Massett also summarized what town attorney, Richard Cody, sent to town manager, Bert. In light of the two opinions, Representative Massett moved to adjourn. Motion seconded by Watson. Motion carried by a vote of four in favor, one no, Representative Thomas. The meeting was adjourned at 1805 hours. Respectfully submitted, Harry Watson. I move a pro vote.
Is there a second? Any, hold on one second. Who seconded, please? Representative Embly and Representative Scott. Are there any appro, any corrections to the minutes? Representative Goethe, corrections?
Yes. Having witnessed the meeting, I would disagree with the characterization that the opinions were summarized, I believe they were just stated to have been received, and in light of their receipt was why there was adjournment. There was no discussion of the opinions, which is why I had sent that email, I think that the entire body received, asking for the opinions, because I was not aware of any of the content, and none of the content of the opinions was actually discussed. It was just a mention, not a summarization of the opinions.
Okay, so noted. Was there a correction to the minutes? Council Boardland?
Sorry, I would like to correct the minutes to say that the FOI Commission and attorney, or sorry, town managers, was it?
It was the attorney.
The attorney. That they were mentioned, not summarized. So switch, switch the word summarized to mentioned or referenced.
And I'd be remiss not to mention that I was present as an ex officio member at that meeting that was not disclosed in the minutes. I'm sure Representative Scott was aware of that, since it was all over Facebook, so it'd be proper to no debt.
Inappropriate point of order.
That in there, thank you.
You're out of order, thank you.
That's fine.
You're out of order, thank you.
What was out of order is the negativity that he put online. Thank you.
Your point? Just correct.
The quorum from our members as well as ex officios should apply, thank you.
Thank, you're welcome, yes. Representative Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. In regards to the minutes, I did submit a minority report that I would like to have included with the minutes.
Let's approve these minutes first, and then we can move on to the minority report. My apologies, I did not get them, and so, one second.
You did not get the minutes, or you did not get the minority?
I did not get the minority reports.
I sent it out at 5:15 this evening.
Okay, I didn't see it after 5:15 this evening. So, um...
Well, I can, I'm prepared to share it.
Hold on, I'll, and we'll get to it. I just need to finish. They are proved as amended. Okay, Representative Thomas, you have a minority report.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, under the rules, 6.4.1.1 and 6.4.1.2, as a member of the RTM Rules and Procedures Committee who is on the dissenting side of a vote, I submit and share this minority report. It is the opinion of this committee member that the proceedings, deliberations, and decisions made by the 33rd RTM Rules and Procedures Committee on September 6th, 2023, at 6:00 PM be considered illegitimate and invalid for the following irregularities that occurred in the execution of the 33rd RTM Rules and Procedures. Number one, Rule 6.4.2, Notice of Committee Meeting states that all chair shall notify the clerk of the RTM of the date, time, and place when any committee meeting is scheduled. The clerk of the RTM shall notify each member and ex officio member of that committee, the chair of the corresponding council committee, and such other members as shall have expressed in writing a desire to be notified of a specific committee meeting. The clerk of the RTM may notify the press of such meeting so interested members of the RTM or public may attend. My comments in regard to this rule and the preparation and conduct of the meeting that was scheduled for and occurred upon the 6th of September, 2023, at 6:00 PM, the chair of the RTM Rules and Procedure Committee, the town clerk, town manager, and RTM moderator neglected to notify the ex officio member who made the inquiry that prompted the referral that was the subject of the meeting. While Council Boardland may not have explicitly stated in writing that she wanted to be included in the proceedings, it was known to the clerk and the moderator, and therefore the chair, that it was her inquiry that prompted the referral. That is evident due to the initial draft of the referral written by the clerk and emailed to the body at 1:31 PM on August 28th, 2023, that specifically named Council Boardland as the ex officio member who made the inciting inquiry to the moderator. The counselor's name was removed in a subsequent revision of the referral sent at 4:26 PM that same day. It should be considered a reasonable expectation for any member of this body who makes an inquiry that prompts a referral to be included in all communications regarding the meeting that is scheduled to discuss that referral. Furthermore, if the moderator, if the moderator is going to take the initiative to commit the referral to writing on behalf of a member, then it should be considered a reasonable expectation that the moderator would include the member on the drafting of that referral. To my knowledge, neither the clerk, moderator, nor chair contacted Council Boardland to notify her of the referral, nor did any one of them attempt to ensure the referral accurately attempt, captured the nature of the inquiry. Perhaps Rule 6.4.2 needs to be referred for review for better account, to better account for similar possible discrepancies in the future. I recommend a revision that would require a communication and reports item to be standard part of the agenda for any RTM meeting moving forward, so long as those communications pertain to the subject on the agenda for that committee. Number two, Rule 6.4, Committee Responsibility states, it is the function and responsibility of each committee to, one, ask questions, gather information, and be fully informed about the operation of town functions within its purview, particularly as related to the RTM's budgetary authority. Provide information, number two, provide information to the RTM necessary for the RTM to make informed decisions on items recommended for action. Number three, maintain contact with appropriate appointed and elected officials of the town. Number four, consider and recommend action to the RTM regarding proposed or pending legislation affecting its assigned area. Number five, initiate or propose RTM action on issues in the committee's purview. Number six, perform such other functions as may be assigned to them by the moderator or the RTM from time to time. My comments regarding this rule, regarding this rule, the September 6th RTM RNP meeting failed to ask questions, gather information, and be fully informed about the functions within its purview. Failed to provide information to the RTM necessary for the RTM to make informed decisions. Failed to maintain contact with appropriate elected officials. Failed to consider and recommend actions to the RTM regarding proposed or pending legislation. And failed to initiate or propose RTM action on issues in the committee's purview. Number three, Rule 6.4.1, Committee Report states that each chair of a committee shall submit a report to the RTM on each item referred to the committee for consideration, and on other items the committee initiates for consideration, for the purpose of advising the RTM as to the recommended action on such matters. This report shall include any information presented to the committee that may assist the full RTM in considering the question, and shall be in accordance with Rules 6.4.1.1 and 6.4.1.2. In relation to this rule, my comments, the minutes in the report submitted to the body by Chair Watson does not include all the information that was presented to the committee in the days prior to the meeting. The missing contextual information is necessary to assist the full RTM in considering the questions, and thus, the report is not in accordance with 33rd RTM Rules and Procedures. The report provided by Chair Watson also fails to provide any substantial recommendations for the RTM to consider. Number four, Rule 6.4.1.1, Content of Reports Minutes Minority Report states that a committee slash reports, committee report slash minutes shall contain the following information: Date, time, and place of meeting, names of members present and absent, names of members voting affirmatively, negatively, and those abstaining, recommendations for actions by the RTM, and any further information deemed pertinent or necessary for the RTM to make an informed decision on the subject. If the vote of the committee was divided, the dissenting minority may submit a report of its own. Similar to my comments on the previous rule, the chair's report contains no recommendations for action by the RTM, nor does it contain much in the way of information that would be deemed pertinent or necessary for the RTM to make an informed decision. Thus, I concluded there is no other recourse than other to craft this submit, craft and submit this minority report along with the associated referrals to the Rules and Procedures Committee. Referral number one, the current version of the rule does not exist. I would propose in addition...
Hold on, are you making a motion to add a rule? What do you, I'm confused on what you're doing at this moment.
I was, yeah, submitting a referral.
A referral to the Rules and Procedures Committee?
As a part of my minority report. So I could rephrase, say, I recommend...
Okay.
The Rules and Procedures. Consider a rule, adding a rule 6.5.5, all RTM committee meeting agendas shall include an item for communications and reports to be placed on the agenda in such a manner that allows the item to be further provide relevant information for the committee to consider in its deliberation on a referral. Communications and reports presented by any member must pertain to the subject of the meeting, or subjects of the meeting, that are on the published agenda. And recommendation number two, considering Rule 9.6, I'd recommend that the following changes be made, that it would read, instead of what is currently in the rules, it would read, "Any member of the public who is not a voting member or ex officio member of the RTM wishing to speak may notify the RTM via the clerk of the RTM at any time prior to the hour the meeting is called at which they desire to speak." The time allocation is usually, shall usually be not less than five minutes unless a different time is determined by the moderator. The public will be subject to the same restrictions as any RTM member. Any voting or ex officio member of the RTM may speak under public petitions, so long as the subjects, or a subject or subjects of their remark, remarks are not items scheduled on the agenda for that same meeting.
Okay, I'll take that into advisement.
Thank you.
You're welcome. One correction, and then I will, I've got a question for Representative Massett. One, the only people that are ex officio members to any committee are the moderator and the two floor leaders. So a town counselor and a member of the RTM who is not a member of that committee are not ex officio members. They do not need to be recognized, they do not need to be notified. You are welcome to look on the agenda. I believe it gets sent out. It gets sent out on, it's... Anyone can attend, but you do not have the right to speak or be recognized. Representative Massett, may I ask the question, was there a recommendation made out of the Rules and Procedures Committee?
Madam Moderator, am I muted?
No.
Madam Moderator, there was not.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, it was classed as a special meeting. As such, all we could discuss was what was presented to us at that time.
That is correct. And what I took, what I took was from what was discussed at the meeting, there was actually a correction that I asked to be made, because I didn't feel like the original agenda captured what was being asked, so I did correct it. So that is why it moved forward, but I'd be happy to look at your recommendations, and we'll make a decision. This is a rule that has been discussed already three times, so originally, and then two other times, so we will see. Representative Embly.
Madam Moderator, I'm gonna direct this question to you for the temporary chair of the Rules Committee. I know it was a very short meeting, and there was a little bit of garbling going on, but there seemed to be a lot of back chatter, and I was just wondering if I could get some clarification on what that was all about.
Representative Massett? Was it during the meeting?
There was some back chatter going on as the meeting was occurring, and then I had heard through members of that Rules and Procedures Committee that there was other discussion happening after the meeting had adjourned, which was related to that.
Well, once it adjourns, we can't discuss that.
Okay.
Right.
Then I would stick to the, the point of, what was the disturbance that was going on during that in the, in the background?
If I may, at one point, I was attempting to give my rationale for moving to adjourn, and Counselor Boardland was trying to speak over me. I think I might have said, "Excuse me," and that was, that was it.
Okay, so we'll just work on decorum, hopefully. Representative Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just a quick question, what was it that qualified the meeting as a special meeting, as opposed to just a meeting of the Rules and Procedures Committee?
My guess is because it was re...
No, 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 all, all committee meetings are special meetings. We only have regular meetings if you have a 30-day advanced notice of that meeting. So we do a yearly schedule for the RTM, but all committee meetings are special, and they only can speak on the item that's on their agenda. Any, any, any quorum of a committee after the adjournment, it's speaking is in violation of FOI.
Understood. Yeah, it's just been my experience with the Rules and Procedures Committee that, that was the first time that I heard it specifically mentioned as a special meeting, and therefore, like, the limitations, so.
I think they're all special meetings.
I mean, I'll check the agendas in the past, I guess, so, thank you.
Representative Embly.
Sorry, just one more thing, I didn't hear it in, in the discussion, but were all committee members of the Rules and Procedures Committee given the legal opinion and FOIA prior to the meeting?
They were.
To review and discuss and deliberate, thank you.
They were.
Yes.
Representative Goethe.
In light of that, is there any way we can add both of those opinions to the, the record or the minutes, because they weren't available to the entire body?
They can be... They're actually online and available to the public.
As part of the, the meeting minutes or the meeting package, because, like I said, it wasn't available prior to the meeting to everyone who received that agenda.
Sure. Representative, or Council Boardland?
Thank you. So since it was a referral of mine, which I did some research on and talked to some different people, and got, you know, other opinions of, of people who do local government, what I had asked that night and what was sent were two different things. What I'd asked the night at the RTM is...
Point of order.
Yes, your point.
Madam Moderator, I believe that the motion on the floor is to approve the minutes?
There actually is no motion on the floor at the moment.
No, there's not, thank you.
I did second the motion. I seconded to approve it, so.
And we, we approved it by consensus with the, the correction.
Roger that.
So, the referral that, my mic was off. The referral that was sent, and it was stated, if you rewatch the original video from when I was here that night, what I did my research on, I felt like my...
Point of order. Are we debating a subject that's not on the agenda tonight?
We are, yes.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. We are, so, we're gonna close this, this discussion, because it's actually not, there's no motion on the floor right now, so we're gonna move on. So unless there is some sort of correction to the minutes, which have already been agreed upon, there was a minority report.
Another correction.
What's your other correction?
That it was not stated that I had emailed what I exactly stated on that night, and that was never presented. It also was not stated tonight that Representative Massett stated that maybe I should re-refer my referral, because what was sent for the attorney's opinion was not what was stated on the night that I was here.
Okay.
So that's my correction, that should also be part of the minutes.
Thank you.
And, so it was not, the opinion might be correct, but it wasn't what I had stated. And again, to state what that was, is as a taxpayer, I should have the right to speak under public comment if there's something that's not on the agenda.
We're not discussing this right now.
So, so that should be added.
You are welcome to add that, you're welcome to send it.
So could Jackie Massett speak to that? Because that was part of the discussion.
It came from the body.
It, it, actually, your, I'm gonna say this, when you send out an email, hold on one second, when an email gets sent out moments, hours before...
It wasn't moments.
I corrected myself, hours before a meeting, it makes it very challenging for the meeting members to have that information. members to have that information, so...
With all due respect...
With all due respect, please let me finish speaking. Thank you. So if you send out something an hour beforehand, I tried very hard to honor your wishes to refer it to committee. You came here, gave a referral to committee, I sent it to committee, there are no recommendations from that committee, so we're going to move on tonight, on to our next subject.
With all due respect, I spoke at the town council meeting directly to the town manager and the, our town clerk, saying that there was an error.
Okay.
So that was weeks and weeks in advance, and it was never stated at the meeting that they were in receipt of my correction.
You are welcome to send in whatever you would like in writing.
And it was talked about decorum.
Okay.
Decorum should be, I've been attacked by Representative Scott online over this, so it should be decorum, thank you.
Point of order, decorum, please.
Decorum is important.
Madam Moderator, I... Rise.
Representative Massett, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you.
Why are we discussing things that happen online outside of the purview of this body?
Agreed, agreed.
That's personal, it has no bearing on the RTM.
Agreed, thank you. So we have mentioned decorum a number of times, and I got an email from somebody who I don't even know about the poor decorum of members. I'm going to ask you very kindly, and it is not everyone, so thank you, to please use your best decorum tonight and every night, so we can move forward. We're moving on... Yes, Representative Massett.
Quickly, again, we, as you stated, we did not get the communication from Counselor Bordelon, and even if we had gotten it, we would not have been able to discuss it again because our committee meeting was a special meeting, and we could only discuss what was in front of us.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving on. Liaison reports, are there any liaison reports? Representative Casper, enlighten us.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. There was a meeting of the Golf Advisory Board this past Monday, September 11th. July and August revenues were posted. July total revenue was $176,000 compared to $178,000 last year for the month. 4,980 rounds were played compared to the previous year's 5,208. Rain events resulted in a loss of 263 rounds compared to the previous year. August total revenue was $187,500, almost $20,000 more than the previous year's $167,900. A total of 5,459 rounds were played compared to 5,102 previous years. Fiscal date, fiscal year-to-date revenue is $363,650, which is ahead of last year's A property owner adjacent to hole number 14 has reported a washout in his yard due to stormwater runoff from the course. They submitted a video of the event to Parks and Rec, and a fix is being considered. Other issues raised in the meeting were a lack of fairway, a lack of fairway irrigation has led to less than optimal playing conditions this summer. Both the men's and women's club reps mentioned that members have complained that the popularity of the course has led to their difficulties in obtaining desired tee times, mainly on weekends. There's a, the combination of phone and online reservations seems to need tweaking, as well as perhaps a cap on season memberships. The next meeting of the gab is November 6th.
Thank you so much. Are there any other liaison? Seeing none. We will move on. Any budget discussions? No, okay. Other business?
I do have a budget discussion question, I'm sorry. Ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, this is my first meeting in person since the budget had concluded. I did a little bit of math. We had seven meetings. It went for 16 hours. We save, we changed no numbers, not one number. I think there was one number that was kind of forced on us to change, and then after all the calculations, they changed, but this body changed no numbers. So again, I'm just going to go ahead and do a flashback. Initially, I wanted to present a flat number for all town operations, which would have sped up the process, made it more efficient, and we could have really dug into other items such as CIPs. However, that was shot down, but I do appreciate the membership that did support it. During those 16 hours, we heard a lot of discussion, a lot of number changes. Again, I respect all those, and a lot of those folks had some really good points. My contention at that was, don't wait till the 11th hour with 30 minutes and try to make those changes. Now is the time to make those changes. So if there is something that you had financial issue with, we should be having those discussions within our committee to then make a recommendation, quite possibly to the town council, that could actually get that direction to happen. So whether it's an educational thing, or a public service thing, community development item, those items should be brought up now until probably the end of the year, and a little bit further until we get that budget book. But by the time that budget book is made, you know, our time to do this is over. So we can, we can talk, and we can debate, and we can have discussions about it and do calculations, however, as I proved the point, 16 hours, zero changes, and we still ended up stamping that budget, signed, sealed, and delivered. So I just wanted to make that known. And again, I encourage any member who has those issues of financial, whether you want to increase or decrease that budget, to let's, let's get some consensus within this body, make a recommendation for a referral, and then we can go ahead and have those discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Gauthier, do you have something on the budget?
Yeah, so if I wanted to bring up a budget item before there's been an appropriation recommended by the manager, how would I go about doing that?
You could bring it up right during that time, during this time.
During this time, but if, as was considered by Representative Ambros to have it go to committee, would I just bring that up? So if I'm the chair of the Community Development Services Committee, and I wanted to talk about items under our cognizance, could I bring that up at any time, or would I need a referral to come from you to have a special meeting?
You would need a referral to go to a special meeting.
Okay, thank you.
But you could bring it up during budget discussion, and we could refer it. Yep. Okay, other businesses, anything, Representative Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. At the last meeting, we were discussing the power of initiative, and you said that you were going to withhold judgment until the September meeting and make a call as to whether or not to refer that to a committee. I'm just here to ask about that and ask respectfully for you to maybe refer to a committee to Community Development and Services, I think would be a good one upon further reflection, or maybe a joint committee between Community Development Services and Finance and/or Rules and Procedures. You know, for no other reason than to give the document or the whole situation due diligence, I'd like to work with the committee to come up with some recommendations, or recommendations not to take action, depending on the situation. But I think with as much nuance that's in the document and with the situation, with the various emails that have gone around between the town manager and myself and other representatives, I think it's worth maybe just to work with the committee, come up with a report to kind of, you know, stabilize the situation, explain, you know, what was the impetus, what's the result, what have we discovered, and, you know, if there's a recommendation to move forward or not. Thank you.
Before I make a judgment on that, is there anything else coming up in new business? Seeing none. Oh, Representative Massett, did you have new business? Okay. Representative Bordelon, do you have new business? That is not...
That is not what, I just want to make sure.
I'm sorry?
You said that is not, I just want to make sure.
That's not related to the power of initiative?
No, yeah, I'd like to make sure that, I'll follow it up with an email, I'd like to refer my correct submitted items with the proper writing from the original meeting.
So a referral...
I'm hearing whispers from the town clerks, I'd love to hear what she's saying.
So the liaison, a liaison position, you don't make referrals, you don't make motions, you don't do that. If you want something to be worked on, then you can write a letter to the moderator as a counselor, and she could report it under communications that this is something you want to do.
Point of information, we can't hear you.
Oh, it's probably my mic.
Oh, hold on one second. Thank you.
Hold on. What I, what I was saying, can you hear me now? Yes, okay, okay. So what I was saying is, there's a confusion about what a liaison to a board or commission is, and...
It's ex officio.
Well, excuse me, ex officio. So I'm an ex officio, the town manager is an ex officio, the superintendent of the schools, the chairman of the Board of Ed, each counselor, let's see if I missed anyone. Okay. But that does not give us the right to make motions or referrals to this body. We are allowed to make a comment or add information that we might have to help you deliberate, but that's not what the, or ex officio's members are supposed to do. And furthermore, monopolizing the floor, as you've been doing, is also...
Point of order.
Not something, you don't have, you don't make points of order either.
Well, point of order, I find that to be offensive.
You don't have the right to make a point of order.
That's offensive to say that I'm monopolizing, that's not fair.
Well, there you are right now, so I'm good thinking that.
So then I guess my, my other business would be to ask a representative to correctly use the email that I sent to the town manager, the chair of the committee, and properly refer it. I felt like I was in the right to say that because my referral came from the floor the last time, and I didn't get the same comment, so, but I would ask if anyone is willing to re-refer the exact writing of it that I had sent.
I've already stated that you are welcome to send me whatever you want to send me.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Representative Ambros.
Madam Moderator, I'd like to thank our resident that came out and spoke today. It's a bit shocking to hear that whatever's going on digitally online is occurring. That's, again, a violation of the decorum from this body. I'm going to strongly urge that this body cease and desist any of those types of unprofessional and uncivilized discussions, and I might end up actually rallying a few of my RTM members to consider referring this to committee for another rules violation. This is not the first time this has occurred. I've had to write, as a, as a private citizen at the time, as a taxpayer, about decorum in other bodies by the same member, and it's, it's becoming a bit too much. Half of the reason that I came back onto this body to fill the position for District Two was because there was a deterioration of decorum on this body, and I hope that, that we're learning from our mistakes. However, it doesn't seem to be working so far, so, again, I'm going to urge my colleagues here to cease and desist all decorum issues and not trying to, again, retaliate against private citizens on their opinion, because, again, that's, just like I've said at other meetings, it's workplace harassment, and it's, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be happening. And it is laughable, because, again, the populace looks to us, and it's, it's just disheartening, so hopefully we can change our course here. Thank you.
So I'm going to touch on a couple things, and then Representative Massett, did you have something to talk about before I spoke?
Please, in response to Representative Ambros, I would like to make a referral to Rules and Procedures to possibly look at a procedure for censure of members who repeatedly violate our rules. I will send that referral to you in writing.
Thank you for sending it in writing.
Second.
It doesn't need to be seconded, it just, we're going to send it forward, or we're going to, she's going to send it to me, and we'll, we'll look at it. Couple things, Representative Sir.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm just curious as to whether I get an opportunity to tell my side of things here at any point, with respect and with decorum.
Not right now. Okay, so if it, if it goes before Rules and Procedures Committee, or if there's some sort of censure, then that would be your place to have your, your time, if you are concerned with that.
And, well, I am concerned with that because if I do, if I recall, I have never been attacked before in public, and that's how all of this started, so I would like to be able to go back...
Madam Moderator, point of order...
What's your point of order?
My point of order is that I think you had already said that she would have an opportunity to present her case possibly before the Rules and Procedures Committee.
So can, can we hold on, and if this is something that we move forward with, then you will have the opportunity to have your discussion then?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to highlight a couple of things that we've did tonight. One are emails. There have been a lot of emails, especially in the last month. The time to discuss things are in this meeting, not in emails. So at some point, we're going to have a FOIA violation because emails keep going back and forth. So I'm going to ask you to please hold off on emails to the degree that they've been going on. Second of all is decorum. If you have a referral to me, that's fine, you're welcome to send that. We've already touched on this tonight. It is unfortunate that it is a handful of people that is making this become an issue. So I'm going to ask that you please be kind to each other, be appropriate with each other. I cannot ask that you not put things on social media, but I'm going to ask that you not put things on social media. Consider what you're doing. You're a representative of this town, and more is expected of you than this. So all I'm going to say, I don't have the right to tell you not to put things on social media, so please don't think that I do, and please don't think that I think that you, that I do. What I'm asking is that we have a higher level of standard than we have been presenting in this room. Okay, so we are moving on to the power of initiative. At the last meeting, I said I was going to wait till this meeting because there was no consensus, we had a small attorney report, but nothing very specific, so I asked for a more detailed attorney report, and we got it. It's like five pages. This report tells me that this is not ready, so I am not referring it to committee at this time. If it, if someone wants to revise it and bring it back, that's absolutely your right to do, but at this time, the attorney is saying it is not ready. If it gets sent to the town council like this, they don't have to legally even look at it. So I'm saying it's not going to committee now, and we are moving on. All right, any other business? Representative Casper.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just wanted to make a suggestion that one of the reasons the emails are occurring is because when one replies, it's easy to reply to all. My suggestion is that the list of members be sent as a BCC... My suggestion is that the list of members be sent as a BCC, and therefore, a reply will only go to the person who sent it.
Good suggestion.
And I think that should alleviate a lot of the problems.
Thank you for that suggestion. Okay. Anything else? Then I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I've got a-
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Thank you. We are adjourned at 8:50.